Good afternoon, everyone. This is the regular board meeting of the Trustees of El Paso Community College District, and it is being held today, April the 30th, at 4:32. This regular meeting is being held here in the Administrative Service Center located at 950 Vicombe Boulevard, Board of Trustees Room 8200, El Paso, Texas 79925, and is viewable through the EPCC YouTube channel. Refer to the link, https://www.youtube.com/user/goEPCC. And I think we have a call, right? Call the order?
Yes. Mrs. Robles.
Here.
Ms. Nahera.
Here.
Mr. Mendez.
Here.
Dr. Graham.
Here.
Mr. Uxer is running later. Mr. Haggerty will not be here tonight.
Okay, can we have, um, Mr. Dr. Smith lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Item 1.4, approval of minutes. This includes December 4, 2024, regular board of trustees meeting minutes, January 29, 2025, regular board of trustees meeting minutes, and February 25, 2025, regular board of trustees meeting minutes.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Call the question, please.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye, except for the one that I missed, which was the, um, February 25th.
Dr. Graham, if you're not approving the last one, then it fails for lack of a, uh, we only have four, so all four of you have to approve, and it could be just something that could be tabled for the next meeting, or we could revisit once Mr. Uxer comes back.
I think we can approve. Thank you, sir.
Item 1.5, welcome to guests and staff members. Item 1.6, open forum, there is none, Dr. Graham. Section 1.7, presentations by individuals, groups, and organizations. Item 1.7.1, optional presentations will be made by the presidents of the Classified Staff Association, the Professional Staff Association, the Faculty Association, and the Student Government Association.
She's going first. Take that down. The surprise is coming.
The surprise is coming.
Sorry.
Good evening, members of the board, President Serata, staff, and guests. My name is Laura Gaither, and I'm president of Classified Staff. I am here to discuss a matter that is not only crucial for the well-being of our employees, but also for the sustained success and growth of our institution, the need for a pay raise for our dedicated workforce. First and foremost, I want to acknowledge the incredible efforts and resilience our employees have demonstrated, especially over the past few years. They have navigated unprecedented challenges with unwavering commitment and have consistently delivered exceptional results. Their hard work has been instrumental in achieving our strategic goals and maintaining the mission of the El Paso Community College. The cost of living has been steadily increasing, impacting our employees' ability to maintain their standard of living. By adjusting their pay to reflect these changes, we can ensure they are not only able to meet their basic needs, but also thrive. Competitive compensation is a key factor in retaining top talent. Our employees are our greatest asset, and by investing in them, we are investing in the future of this institution. A pay raise will boost morale, reduce turnover, and foster a more engaged and motivated workforce. In a competitive job market, offering attractive compensation packages is essential to attract skilled professionals. By providing a pay raise, we position ourselves as an employer of choice, capable of drawing in the best and brightest talent, not only making it a great place to start for students, but making it a great place to start a career as well. When employees feel valued and fairly compensated, they are more likely to go above and beyond in the roles. This leads to increased productivity, higher-quality work, and greater innovation, all of which contribute to our student and college mission's success. I understand that financial considerations are paramount. However, I believe that the long-term benefits of a pay raise far outweigh the initial costs. Our suggestion for staff would be to get 6%, as only getting 3% for a person making $40,000 equals to them seeing about $80 in their paycheck, which does uncover a trip to getting daily essentials at the supermarket. Additionally, the positive impact on employee performance and retention will ultimately lead to greater financial returns for the institution. In conclusion, providing a pay raise for our employees is not just a gesture of goodwill, it is a strategic investment for EPCC's future. Our employees have shown us time and again that they are backbone of our success. It is our responsibility to ensure they are compensated fairly for their hard work and dedication. Thank you for considering a 6% proposal. I am confident that together you can make a decision that will benefit both our employees and our institution. Thank you for your time and attention. Let's continue to build a brighter future for our students and our invaluable employees. Thank you.
Thank you.
EPCC and the Terrible, Horrible, No Good, Very Bad Bill, known as SB 37, with thanks to Judith Vierst, for those of you who remember that book way back when. From the Declaration of Independence, "The history of the present Lieutenant Governor and dominant political party of Texas is a history of repeated injuries and usurpations, all having in direct object the establishment of an absolute tyranny over Texas public colleges and universities. To prove this, let facts be submitted to a candid world. Thus, I offer a comparison between EPCC and SB 37." Comparison 1. EPCC, Faculty Association and Faculty Senate are established by and operated by the EPCC Faculty Association bylaws. SB 37, the EPCC Board of Trustees will establish a brand-new Faculty Association Senate by adopting a policy governing the selection of the faculty councils or Senate's members, presumably without faculty input. Comparison 2. Faculty members elect one full-time and one adjunct-at-large senator from each of the six EPCC campuses, and two full-time senators from each academic division. Under SB 37, at-large senators are eliminated, and it allows for two senators from each academic division, one of whom is elected by the division's faculty, and one of whom is appointed by the EPCC president. Congratulations on your new job description. Comparison 3. The Faculty Association full-time vice president, uh, it should be Faculty Association president, full-time vice president, and secretary are granted paid release hours. Under SB 37, members of the faculty council or senate are not entitled to compensation or reimbursement of expenses. Comparison 4. The Faculty Association officers and faculty senators serve terms of two years and are not subject to term limits. Under SB 37, faculty senators appointed by the EPCC president may serve up to six consecutive one-year terms, and may only be reappointed after a two-year absence. Elected senators serve one two-year term and can only be reelected after a two-year absence. Comparison 4. The Faculty Association Executive Committee, consisting of the president, full-time vice president, adjunct vice president, and secretary, are elected by the faculty for a term of two years and can be reelected. Under SB 37, the EPCC president, with the advice and consent of the Board of Trustees, shall appoint a presiding officer, associate presiding officer, and secretary from the members of the faculty council or senate, an additional job for you fine people. Comparison 6. Sometimes the EPCC Faculty Association Senate passes resolutions that do not need administrative consent, such as approving the minutes, or the resolution passed this academic year urging all faculty to be courteous and aware of the 10-minute time between classes. Under SB 37, a faculty council or senate is advisory-only, and may not be delegated the final decision-making authority on any matter. Presumably, that means administration, or the trustees, or both, must approve everything the Association Senate passes, including the mundane resolutions such as those stated above, and we pass a bunch of those. Why? This ridiculous bill is being advocated by the dominant political party of Texas, all because Lieutenant Governor Dan Patrick is throwing, what I call, a hissy fit, because the UT Austin Faculty Senate had the audacity to pass a resolution opposing something Patrick was in favor of. Said political party claims to be the defender of democracy in America, yet this bill is nothing less, nothing less, than a blatant attempt by that party and Patrick to destroy democracy in Texas public colleges and universities, because they believe, without any proof whatsoever, that, quote, "looty Marxist professors," are supposedly indoctrinating students to hate America and turn them into socialists and communists. In fact, said political party and the Lieutenant Governor are attempting to indoctrinate students to their own far-right propagandistic beliefs. To paraphrase the Declaration of Independence, my favorite political document, Lieutenant Governor Dan Patrick and the dominant political party of Texas have dissolved representative houses repeatedly for opposing with manly firmness their invasions on the rights of the people. They have made boards of trustees, you fine people, dependent on their will alone. They have erected a multitude of new offices and sent hitherto swarms of officers to harass our people and eat out their substance, dang bunch of cannibals. They have combined with others to subject us to our jurisdiction, foreign to our constitution, and unacknowledged by our laws, giving their assent to their acts of pretended legislation. They have taken away our bylaws, abolishing our most valuable laws, altering fundamentally the forms of our government. They have suspended our own senates and declaring themselves invested with power to legislate for us in all cases whatsoever. A Lieutenant Governor and dominant political party whose character is thus marked by every act which may define a tyrant is unfit to be the ruler of a free people. A resolution by the EPCC Faculty Senate. Whereas Senate Bill 37 seeks to totally dissolve and destroy the El Paso Community College Faculty Senate, whereas SB 37 proposes to totally dissolve the EPCC Faculty Association bylaws and replace them with bylaws created by the EPCC Board of Trustees, and whereas SB 37 proposes severely limited who can be on the Faculty Senate, and whereas SB 37 proposes to have certain senators appointed by the EPCC president instead of elected by the faculty, and whereas SB 37 proposes to have the Faculty Association Executive Committee appointed by the president and approved by the Board of Trustees instead of elected by the faculty, and whereas SB 37 proposes that senators appointed by the college president are limited to six consecutive one-year terms, and the faculty-elected senators are limited to one two-year term and can only be reelected after the second anniversary of the last day of the member's most recent term, and whereas SB 37 proposes to destroy the democratic way the EPCC Faculty Senate has chosen and operates, the EPCC Faculty Senate duly assembled does hereby condemn and oppose this undemocratic, vile, and repugnant SB 37 as it is currently proposed, done as 14th day of April in the year 2025, revised on the 22nd day of April in the year 2025. Under SB 37, you, the members of the EPCC Board of Trustees, will have to approve this very resolution. What will you do? Thank you. Oh, and by the way, I was reelected president of the senate.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
What are you going to do about this?
Thank you again.
Thanks, Dr. Burnham.
Section 1.8, Communications, Item 1.8.1, Discussion and Review Regarding Data Statistics, Policies, and General Information Related to El Paso Community College by the Board of Trustees.
Dr. Graham, members of the board, I would like to call on Dr. Dolores Gross, our Executive Director of Resource Development, to present the latest on the good work that our foundation has done with regards to raising scholarships for the students that were privileged to serve. Dr. Gross, please.
Thank you, Dr. Serata. Good evening, Vice Chair Dr. Alivas Graham, and Board of Trustees, college administrators, faculty, and staff. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening and give you some updates and recent information about your El Paso Community College Foundation. I have with me here this evening our board chair for this year, and I'd like to introduce him, Mr. Vijay Smith of Marathon Petroleum, a great partner and funding partner of El Paso Community College. Vijay, would you like to come up and say hello?
Good afternoon, President, and members of the Board of Trustees. It's an honor to be before you and before Dr. Gross gives this presentation. I just want to convey how proud I am of Dr. Gross, her staff, and our current board for the foundation. This is an amazing group of professionals in business, industry, and in the community. They're relentless about the vision and mission of El Paso Community College, and they're relentless in terms of ways of raising money and keeping our foundation dollar amounts high, on average of $250,000 a year for scholarships and student emergency aid, and also want to thank Dr. Mo for her overarching support as well, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Vijay. I'd like to share with you this evening some recent updates, and as Vijay said, the mission, vision, and strategic goals of El Paso Community College are the mission and vision of your EPCC Foundation. We are your affiliated nonprofit foundation to raise funds for El Paso Community College students and to support EPCC programs. We provide scholarship funding to help EPCC students achieve high-value credentials and partner with local companies like Marathon Petroleum that Vijay represents and employers to provide funds and to develop our region's skilled workforce. We collaborate with faculty and staff across the college to identify program and student needs and to raise funds to support students. So to help students stay on track, including their emergency needs, and investing in the college foundation is an investment in EPCC students. I'd like to share with you our foundation board officers for this year. Vijay Smith, as I mentioned, Chair. Vanessa Aguilar at Tani Acosta and Chaparro is our Vice Chair. Thomas Gabriel at West Star Bank is our Treasurer, and Miriam Guerrero, the CFO of Workforce Solutions Borderplex, is our Board Secretary. On our board this year, we have two new members, Ms. Mariana Benevides of the Woody and Gale Hunt Family Foundation, and Dr. Andrea Tani from Texas Tech, El Paso, who's a vice president there. So you'll see our board members, and they are all advocates for El Paso Community College. Many of them are also funders of EPCC through their contributions for student scholarships and our programs. In the past 10 years, the foundation has awarded almost 2,000 scholarships, 1,940 scholarships, and over $2 million to EPCC students. I have here for you some of our outcomes data, and I'm looking forward to working with Dr. Penley's staff at Institutional Research, because we track our students each semester and at the end of each academic year to see how they're doing. So we know that 68% of EPCC Foundation scholarship awardees graduate in three or fewer years, and their average, grade point average, is 3.43. And so we're looking forward to more graduates coming up in May and the summer, and we know that so far, the board has projected to award $210,000, almost $211,000 for scholarships to EPCC students for the coming academic year, beginning in fall. Here's some additional data for you. So in the past 10 years, 1,501 EPCC Foundation scholarship awardees have graduated, and last year, there were 165 graduates, and again, we're looking forward to some in May, and perhaps some finishing in summer. And again, we follow them, we know who they are, we know what majors they achieved, their certificates and degrees, and we know exactly how many transfer and go on to achieve additional higher education credentials. I wanted to mention the Stars Scholarship Fund. These awards will be coming up. This is with one of our very active foundation partners, the Stars Scholarship Fund, founded by LNF Distributors. They have been our foundation partner since 2014, and through that partnership, more than $562,000 has been awarded to EPCC students. The foundation matches that funding dollar-for-dollar, so we have to raise that money from the private sector, and so that's really the benefit of the EPCC Foundation. We're out working with the private sector to raise those funds, to bring them to the college. And so our match contribution to date has been over $281,000, and so we know that there are 76 students currently here at EPCC awaiting good news to see if they have been selected for a scholarship to enroll for fall. And so that announcement will be forthcoming soon, and so those students, by the way, that's a full-tuition scholarship, and many of them do complete here, go on to transfer to universities, and Stars also partners with UTEP, so we know that many of them also then go on and receive scholarships when they complete here and transfer to UTEP. McDonald's El Paso, those awards are coming up on the 20th of May. These are for graduating high school seniors, and they've been a partner with the EPCC Foundation since 2019. The unique part about that partnership is that Mr. Castro, Richard Castro, owner, operator of 26 McDonald's here in El Paso, would not have kept this money local unless he had some partners. So the EPCC Foundation partnered with Mr. Castro beginning in 2019, and so everything that McDonald's awards, the EPCC Foundation matches, and so that matching has resulted in $227,000 for EPCC students, and you'll see there that the college foundation matched $113,000 of that funding. Here's some good, other good news for you, and these are new funds that have come in recently, the very end of the year, kicking off 2025, but we have a number of donors, and you'll see the listing there, Barbara Walker from Cisco, and again, that partnership, Cisco matched her contribution, so that's almost a $20,000 contribution. We have the Northeast Rotary Club Foundation, the Pan American Roundtable of El Paso. They started with us last year and set up a $25,000 endowment fund. This year, they contributed another $5,000 to their fund, so that's a $30,000-plus fund for El Paso Community College students. We have some other donors that are fairly new with us, Mr. Gilbert Hendricks. He again awarded another $5,000 for students, without really any criteria other than it go to EPCC students. Sentry Insurance, El Paso Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association, a scholarship was awarded to a student about three weeks ago. They have been a partner these past several years, and those are students in the EPCC Law Enforcement Training Academy, and so a variety of new funds coming into the college. Another newer partner, Nusenda Credit Union, here in El Paso, they purchased Western Heritage Bank. They really are focused on education, and so the foundation applied for funding competitively, and we were awarded $15,000. And so we wrote this to support dual-credit students who want to come into EPCC with scholarships, because we know there are a number of students, many, many of them in the high schools, taking dual-credit coursework, that want to come on over to EPCC and complete their degrees here, and we want to, we wanted to make this an incentive for them to enroll after graduation from high school. So this funding is targeted for dual-credit students in the high schools coming over to El Paso Community College. And save the date for 2025, fajitas and margaritas for scholarships. This past year's event, we had 250-plus, emphasis on the plus, guests, pretty much everybody that could fit into the facility, 29 company sponsors, and again, those sponsors are funders bringing resources for EPCC students into the college through this event. We had 29 of them this past year, and our highest fundraising proceeds to date, we netted more than $87,000 that evening, and so please save the date, join us again, and we know that Dr. Serata, the Board of Trustees, administrators, faculty, and staff have been very supportive of this event. It's fun. We partner with El Paso Community College Culinary Arts, and it's a really great opportunity to showcase EPCC students in action, and we're very proud to host this event on behalf of the college, and very proud to have the trustees, Dr. Serata, our administrators, and faculty, and staff with us at this event, all for student benefit, and our sponsors help every dollar raised at this be proceeds for students. And coming up next week, I know many of you are attending, ticket sales close this evening, they are online, but we have a really exciting event to raise scholarship funding for El Paso Community College nursing students. This will establish an endowment fund for EPCC nursing students to help them get through school, and we know that in tough coursework for nursing, in many cases, it is extremely difficult, or if not impossible, for students to work outside the college, especially when they are going through their clinical rotations, they are required to be in clinical sites, in many cases, in the hospitals, and so they really cannot work to earn money for school. This fund and this fundraiser will help these students with scholarship resources to complete their degrees here at EPCC. And so to share with you, we have some new funding partners for this event, again, bringing in additional and new resources into the college. So these are our funding partners and sponsors for this luncheon on May 7th next week, Texas Tech Health El Paso, Texas Tech School of Nursing, El Paso Children's Hospital, the Hospitals of Providence, UTEP, University Medical Center, Grand Canyon University, Project Arriba, and Tender Care Home Health. All of these educational institutions and healthcare providers did sponsorships because they knew this was an event to support student scholarships, and many of our El Paso Community College graduates that want to go further in their education and achieve the Bachelors of Science in Nursing then transfer onward. So it's an exciting event. We do have some 1974 graduates attending the event. A couple of them came into my foundation offices today, and they were the first graduating class of EPCC nursing, and so they're coming. And so that's next week, May 7th, ticket sales close at 11:00 PM tonight, so anyone in the audience that would like to attend, please join us. It's going to be a nice, festive, celebratory lunch, all for El Paso Community College student benefit. It's going to be a nice festive celebratory lunch, all for El Paso Community College student benefit. Uh, we're very happy to work and support and advocate for EPCC students. That's our, our role and our mission is to help students succeed at EPCC and achieve their degrees and credentials. And to work with our workforce and private sector partners. So thank you so much.
Dr. Bruce, thank you very much for all the work that you do. It's, um, it's refreshing to see that there is funding available. There should be no excuse for students not accessing the college and, uh, getting their, their degrees. But thank you and the foundation for all the work that you do. We appreciate it. I don't know how you got drafted into this, Mr. Smith. But it was a good, a good draft. Thank you for serving.
Section one point nine, Board of Trustees Business. Item one point nine point one, Discussion and Action to Approve the Investment Strategy from Hilltop Securities Asset Management LLC Regarding the Student Success Endowment Fund.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, so.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Item one point nine point two will be discussed after executive session. Section one point ten, Board Reports. Item one point ten point one, Treasurers Report, Treasurers Reports, No Action Is Required. This includes item one point ten point one point one, March thirty-one, twenty twenty-five Financial Statements. Item one point ten point two, President's Report. Item one point ten point two point one, Dr. William Serrata, College President, will update the Board of Trustees and Audience on recent events that have transpired at El Paso Community College.
Good evening, Dr. Graham and members of the board. I'd like to begin my report by expressing my sincere gratitude to each of you for your continued leadership, support and advocacy on behalf of our students, faculty, as well as our staff. Your unwavering dedication to our college's mission of ensuring affordable, high-quality education and career pathways from start to finish, it would, is what makes this community college a place of opportunity, growth and transformation. We've had the opportunity to celebrate the incredible work we accomplish together, and none of it would be possible without strong leadership, as well as the commitment of our faculty and staff. I also want to extend my thanks to our faculty and staff for their relentless dedication to helping our students achieve their dreams and ensuring the college remains a beacon of opportunity and excellence. Whether in the classroom, behind the scenes, or in support of our academic and student services, each of you plays a crucial role in shaping the future of those we serve. Your impact on our students, our community, and each other is sincere and it does not go unnoticed. Thank you for all that you do and Happy Community College Month. As part of the college's Community College Month Celebration, a special brunch was held honoring our retirees. Nearly a hundred and ten former employees attended the event, which served as a heartfelt thank you to those who helped build the foundation of the college. I would like to thank, uh, Dr. Graham and Mrs. Robles for joining us. Having you there meant a lot to the retirees and showed how much we value the legacy they helped build. I'd also like to thank Dr. Keri Mo, Associate Vice President of External Relations Communication and Development, and Ms. Angelica Sano, Special Projects Coordinator, for their outstanding work in organizing this event and ensuring that it was a success. I'm pleased to report that the college has been officially re-designated as a National Center of Academic Excellence in Cyber Defense for the 2024 through the 2029 cycle. This recognition was given during the 2025 CAE in Cyber Security in the Cyber Security Community Symposium, which took place from April eighth through the tenth in South Carolina. A special thank you to Dr. Maisha Pago and Dr. Christian Servin, who represented the college at the symposium and ceremony. The college was one of only thirty-two institutions nationwide. To receive a new designate designation are to be re-designated during this year's event. This accomplishment highlights EPCC's continued commitment to excellence in the fields of cybersecurity and artificial intelligence, education and training. Thank you to all those involved in this recognition. I'm pleased to inform you that the college has earned the prestigious 2025-2026 Silver Military Friendly School Designation by victory. And you also see, um, that, uh, Mr. Dwyer handed out, uh, the 2025-26 Guide to Military Friendly Schools. Uh, since its inception in two thousand and three, the Military Friendly Schools list has been the benchmark for higher education institutions that offer outstanding opportunities for veterans and their families. EPCC proudly serves over three thousand service members, veterans and their families, continually striving to provide the most effective support for these students in achieving their educational goals. EPCC partners with Fort Bliss to offer in-person services in admissions, counseling and advising, and offers evening eight, eight-week general education courses on base. EPCC is committed to being the institution where veterans go to succeed. The Military Friendly Schools Designation is awarded based on a rigorous evaluation of an institution's performance in areas such as retention, graduation, job placement and support for student veterans. More than eighteen hundred schools participated in the survey, and we are honored to be part of this respected network. Thank you for your continued support of our efforts to serve those who have served our country so well. Dr. Joshua Hevret, Associate Professor of History, recently marked the twenty-sixth anniversary of the Columbine High School tragedy by sharing his personal experience as a survivor. In a series of discussions titled A Survivor's Story, Dr. Hevret spoke with students and the community about the day of the tragedy, its historical context, and the long-term effects of surviving such an event. The first session was held on April sixteenth at the Villa Verde campus and another on April twenty-third at the Northwest Campus as part of the EPCC History Department Lecture Series. He emphasized the importance of focusing on the community's resilience rather than the perpetrators, acknowledging the complex and often unanswerable questions surrounding the event. Dr. Hevret, a senior at Columbine during the shooting, was fortunate to be in a different part of the school when the tragedy occurred. He reflected on the lasting impact of those harrowing moments and how they shaped his views on issues such as school safety, as well as gun control, drawing parallels to other tragedies, including the 2019 El Paso tragedy. The discussions were particularly meaningful for students like Yvette Rodriguez, a multidisciplinary studies major, who expressed interest in the mental health challenges faced by survivors and the long-term care they receive. We're proud to have Dr. Hevret at EPCC where his unique perspective as both a survivor and historian enriches our community's understanding of these critical issues. I'm excited to share that EPCC Sign Language Interpreter Christina Diaz was a featured speaker at this year's TEDx Socorro Roots 2025 event. The theme of this year's TEDx is Roots, focusing on identity, heritage, growth, and the foundations that shape us. With a special emphasis on local perspectives from native Socorro resident, residents, Christina, an El Paso native and proud first-generation college graduate, will present on an article she wrote for the National Deaf Journal in 2020. With over thirty-five years of experience in education, her work focuses on special education and the deaf community. She currently serves as a Lab Assistant in EPCC Sign Language Program and holds degrees in Sign Language Interpreting, Psychology and Multidisciplinary Studies, among various certifications. The TEDx event took place on Saturday, April twenty-sixth at the Moonlight Adobe Hall in Socorro, Texas. The event featured thought-provoking talks, local food and craft beer from the Mission's Brewery. Christina's participation in this prestigious event is a testament to her dedication to both her field as well as her community. I'm proud to announce that EPCC Librarian Anna Lizzie Ochoa has been selected as a 2025 Woody and Gail Hunt Aspen Fellow. Lizzie will attend the Aspen Institute Summer Words Festival for Writers from June twenty-second through the twenty-seventh in, uh, of this year in Snowmass Village, Colorado. This prestigious event is one of the nation's top literary gatherings, offering workshops and creative development for emerging and established writers. She is working on several children's books and a short story to script project. She will participate in the book branding workshop led by Taryn Roder, Executive Director of Publicity at Abrams Books. Lizzie looks forward to sharing her unique perspective from the borderplex region and engaging with a diverse group of writers in this transformative experience. The Hunt Aspen Fellowship is designed to elevate voices from the borderplex, El Paso, Ciudad Juarez and Las Cruces through leadership seminars and networking opportunities. Her participation will further strengthen the region's dynamic by national community. EPCC's Professional Development Program held its second annual ACU pinning ceremony at the Administrative Services Center. The event focused on effective online teaching practices and honored twenty-five faculty members who received the ACU Pin of Completion and Certification in Effective Teaching Practices. This national recognition highlights their commitment to excellence in education. The faculty participate in a four-course professional development program facilitated by the Association of College and University Educators, or ACU, which involve collaboration with colleagues nationwide to implement evidence-based teaching strategies. The graduates were awarded a pin, a certificate of completion and a medal to wear at commencement, marking their achievement in advancing the instructional skills, their instructional skills. Congrats to the ACU graduates. To wrap up Community College Month, we had an EPCC Night at the Ballpark. Thank you, uh, thank you all for joining us on Saturday, April twenty-sixth at the ballpark. A huge thank you to our great team, uh, from the president's office for their coordination and effort in making EPCC Night at the Ballpark a success. The, the evening was filled with school spirit, community connection, as well as unforgettable moments. Our EPCC TV studio put together a short video of the, of the new Tejano Music Studio at the Villa Verde uh, campus and of EPCC's Night at the Ballpark. And it is coming up now.
And we have the new Tejano Sun Studio that we have here, and we're very, very proud.
We just actually started and launched three new programs for the music department. Uh, we are currently offering an Associates of Arts and Science in Audio Engineering, Associates of Arts in Music Business, and then a Certificate of Completion in Music Technology, which is a one-year track.
We set off developing two tracks, one for audio engineering and one for music business.
We just need to make this happen because they're going to come, they're going to sign up for it. And sure enough, as soon as we open it up, they're basically, all my sections are full.
Have a recording studio here at EPC Studio and put it together. So we got all the paperwork, we did the course development.
They're going to learn how to, uh, record, um, learn about live sound, acoustics, MIDI, um, and as well as a music business and what it takes to run, uh, a business in recording and if they want to promote themselves.
It's such, it's such a privilege, right? And of course, uh, it would be ideal for, for college to just be accessible for all, right? But we know that EPCC is a much more, um, accessible path here. So the fact that we just started right off the bat, not only learning so much about the fundamentals of sound, um, how it's created, how it's recorded, how it's captured, but then getting immediate access to this facility to be able to practice those skills immediately. Um, that, that has been the biggest thrill. And of course, beyond that, it's, it's also the, the feeling of, of collaboration.
And they all went and wrote their own song, and they're producing it completely.
And teaching audio engineering, but we want to immerse students and give them more knowledge within the music industry. Teach the, the business of music. Uh, Dan and I, Dan Becker and I, we went to LA to the NAMM Show, the National Association of Music Merchants Show, to find out about all this good equipment and recording and made our list and everything and gathered all our information and put it together in our proposal. And, uh, it got approved. It got approved, you know, by the board and everything because this is something that we found out that teenagers in high school, when they come out, they love music and they want to record music. They want to dive themselves in the music. And it goes to show, we have a waiting list here.
And here is our studio. This is where we are going to be recording. And, um, it is completely soundproof. Um, our faculty member Glenn Lefler is, uh, one of the gentlemen who helped with the building of the room.
I built Star City, I built, uh, the A Room of Sonic Ranch. Uh, I've been doing it a long time.
Eventually, the name just kind of, uh, it just made sense. And that's just, it's, it's, it's a big honor, especially because for me, I, I specifically went into this, um, to feel empowered, to, to, uh, know exactly how to produce music. That's always been a dream. I've always been on the stage for years, but I have always wanted to know how to get behind the scenes.
So if you're interested in our program, please give me a call. Again, my name is Dr. Melissa Gurroa. You can find me at, um, music dot EPCC dot edu. My phone number is nine one five eight three one twenty-eight seventy-five. And you can also email me. My email is M G U R R O eleven at EPCC dot edu. We hope to see you here.
I'm excited for it, as you could tell. And the students, they're already busy recording stuff.
Dr. Graham, members of the board, that concludes my report.
Thank you, that was great.
Dr. Graham, I do, I do have one question. Dr. Schrod brought up this, uh, the standing of the Community College and the Military Friendly School. And, um, as you point out, we're designated as silver, whereas they have gold as a top. Now, given the facilities that we have and given the administration and the leadership that we have, I, I find it hard to believe that, I, I guess I'd like to know what the standards they use to do that because maybe there's something out for us to learn. But I thought, I thought what we provided was, uh, you know, what, what you, so obviously there's, there's some area of, uh, that, that other people judge, uh, that might be beneficial for us to look at. But otherwise, I, I don't see how anybody could top. I mean, you look at the new facilities they provide at Trans Mountain and Villa Verde, the leadership that we have here and, and, uh, with that, the veterans we have, the supporting, particularly if we're competing against Dallas, and they don't have any kind of army there.
Uh, Mr. Exer, I certainly appreciate the, um, competitive spirit of, of your question. We will certainly work with Mr. Dwyer, um, and look at, um, at the additional possibilities of services that we could offer to our veterans to try and see. We've been, we've been ranked silver for quite some time, uh, to look to see what it would take to, to reach gold status. And then obviously, we'd love to be one of the top institutions, um, that they, uh, that, that they mention in the magazine.
Let, let me point out, I'm, I'm not seeking for gold status because it's gold.
Understood.
You know, if they have some area that they think's important, but it doesn't fit our needs here, I wouldn't worry about it. But I don't, I don't really see anything that we're short. Command Sergeant Major Preville will take care of that.
Yes, sir.
Maybe, Mr. Graham, we have some insight as to what it takes.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions?
Item one point eleven, Consent Docket, There Is None. Section two, Administration. Item two point one, BBFDIAB, FFDB, FFE, FLD, Legal Revised Tasbe Policies for First Reading and Approval.
Okay, so that was enough to put you to sleep for several nights. Do we have a motion?
Love to approve.
Second.
Any concerns, questions?
Just out of curiosity, can she say the policy's as posted instead of having to go through the alphabet fourteen times?
I don't know, that's a question for legal.
Yes, you could do so. There you go. Excellent.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Item two point two, thirty-six legal Tasbe policies for re- review and comment only. No action is required. Section three, Personnel. Item three point one, Information Items. Institutionally, externally funded, full-time staff, faculty appointments, extensions, resignations and retirements. No action is required. Item three point two, Tenure Track Faculty Appointments and New Tenured Faculty.
Okay, this one does require action. Do we have a motion?
Love to approve.
We need a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm interested. No problem.
Mr. Exer. Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Section four, Financial Services. Item four point one, Discussion and Action on the Authorization to Enter into an Inter-local Agreement with One Government Procurement Alliance, One GPA, a nonprofit sourcing purchasing cooperative.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Section five, Physical Facilities. Item five point one, Discussion and Action on the Approval to Increase Expenditures with Action Target Inc. to Upgrade EPCC's Law Enforcement Academy Firing Range at the Mission del Paso campus in an additional amount of one hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars to previously approved four hundred and seventy-eight thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm just curious, what is involved in the firing range that makes it deficient? I mean, what do we need to do to improve it? If, are we increasing the capacity of the weaponry? Are we increasing the ability? Is it just natural wear and tear? Is it degrading? I mean, I'm not questioning the money. I'm just questioning, what's the state of the facility and what's the state of the art?
I'll ask Dr. Smith to weigh in, Mr. Exer.
Mr. Exer, thank you for the question. The Law Enforcement Training Academy is a little shop-worn. It's been in existence for almost thirty years. It is a situation where the shooting range itself, the targeting system that was originally installed is no longer going to be maintained and needs to be repaired. So we're looking at redoing that entire targeting system. As we were looking at that, we also determined that the traps that capture the bullets that go down the range have begun cracking, and that's what you're seeing on the agenda tonight, is replacing those bullet traps that are behind each one of the ranges. It's not a situation where we're expanding the capacity. It's just we're bringing it up to standards for current law enforcement.
Okay, and the next question I want to take is criticism. But when you go through the budgetary and review and the maintenance policies that you're looking at, how come all of a sudden, you know, now we see that everything is worn and torn? I mean, and so you anticipated three-year planning and maintenance program, and all of a sudden, what we did was roughly a third, I mean, deficient by about a third? I mean, was, weren't we paying attention to the facilities earlier? And it's sort of except it was functional and the sandbags were stopping the bullets, and so everything's okay?
It wasn't a situation where it happened all at once for the targeting system. When we were informed by the company that manufactured that, that they were no longer going to support it, obviously, that was something that got our attention. We did stock up on some supplies to repair that facility for a number of years. The bullet traps, there are two cracked bullet traps out of the, I want to say, twenty-ish shooting ranges that we have. So we're being proactive, and upon inspection, the other bullet traps are indeed becoming shop-worn.
Does that allow the bullet to go downrange? We have to worry about the...
Ask me that again?
Does that, if they're cracked, does that mean the bullet can go downrange?
There's no evidence that any bullets are escaping the tracks, traps at this point.
Just extra sandbags will do it.
Excuse me, thank you for the explanation. That was on page four seventy-five. It was pretty good. I have received compliments from a reliable source, my brother, who goes there, and he likes the range quite a bit. He complimented the work that was done there. So I'm glad we're improving it. Any other comments, discussion?
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Item five point two, Discussion and Action on Approval to Increase the Maximum Contract Award Amount for Three Previously Awarded Vendors and One Additional Vendor for the Purchase of Building Materials, Supplies, and/or Services for the Remainer of the Fiscal Year 2024-25.
Dr. Graham, on this last item, if the board is inclined to approve this, I would just kindly recommend to the board to identify those four vendors. They're not included in the agenda, and I think just for the sake of transparency and openness, if we could identify them, you'll find them on page four seventy-six of your packet.
Okay, so we have Basile Glaze. Is that the ones you're talking about, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Basile Glass Incorporated, and that is at fourteen sixty Common Drive, El Paso, Texas. And Drew Tech Air Conditioning and Refrigeration, located on eighty-seven fifty-five Robert Drive, El Paso, Texas. Sheet Metal Air Plus Company LLC, Forty sixteen Johnson Avenue, El Paso, Texas, and Prime Pump Service LLC, eleven six ten Ernest Road, El Paso, Texas.
Thank you, Dr. Graham.
Any questions, concerns?
So move to approve five point two with the vendors that Dr. Graham just mentioned.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Section six, Curriculum and Instruction. Item six point one, Discussion and Action on the Approval of a Cooperation Contract Agreement from the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board in the Amount of three hundred thousand dollars.
Move to approve.
Very good.
A discussion? Did you want to tell us a little bit more about that, Dr. Smith?
If I go too long, stop me. This is something that gets me pretty excited.
It is exciting.
So under the last legislative session, not this one, of course, we know House Bill Eight was passed, which generally is considered the funding bill for community colleges. But embedded in that bill was also the creation of the Opportunity High School Diploma Program. And so last year, we brought to the board a hundred thousand dollar grant as a planning year for the grant itself to develop the structure for the Opportunity High School Diploma Program. This money is being used to actually develop and implement it. So we're one of five colleges in the state of Texas that has the ability to actually offer the program. So faculty at the institution now are actually in the process of developing the high school curriculum, the placement examinations and training counselors and advisors to do the placement for the high school part of the program, which will be completely competency-based in nature. And so we anticipate enrolling our first cohort of students into this program in the fall.
Do you anticipate a location where they're going to be clustered? Or are they just going to be in different campuses?
They'll be all over the city. We didn't want to make them drive to one particular campus. Being competency-based, we'll have the ability to do this at multiple locations.
And was there ever any discussion of considering younger ones? I looked through it all to see if by any chance we could kind of pick up some of those kiddos that have dropped out at an earlier age. But it doesn't appear that I found any information that would support that because we have so many young people that are not able to access regular programs, and they won't go back to the high schools. They're sixteen, seventeen, but...
Yeah, I don't know. Dr. Schraub, do you want to tackle this one? We don't want to compete with high school recovery programs that some of the districts have now.
We don't, and this legislation was specifically for eighteen and over. I know that the districts can receive state funding up to the age of twenty-six. But this is for students who have already reached an age where they theoretically would have graduated from high school. So we're only allowed to take the adult. We're not allowed to deal with students that are under eighteen.
Do we have an idea of how many we might initiate it with?
So we had contracted or been approached by a number of entities that have done some analysis. In our region, we're looking at, in the nature of thirty thousand potential students that have not completed high school but are in the workforce somewhere in that age group now.
That's a huge number.
Yeah, part of this funding will be for marketing and outreach so that we can reach the desired population. As you can imagine, this particular population is one of the more difficult ones to reach.
And some of the hurdles that are going to be there were probably going to be some of the ones that dropped out because they couldn't pass some of the state assessments. They just gave up. So the criteria to, you know, have them enter the program, are they looking at any of that, or how is that going to be?
Yeah, the criteria are pretty easy. Any student who did not complete high school and is of the appropriate age and interested in earning a college credential is eligible for the program.
Regardless of how they dropped out or...
Correct. And as you can imagine, you know, there could be somebody that dropped out as a senior one semester from graduating high school and others that may have dropped out as soon as they entered high school. So there will be pathways and placements and supports for all those populations.
And I guess we're going to carefully recruit the staff that are going to serve them because that's going to be a huge difference as to...
We have a number of faculty that are really excited to serve this population already. We've also asked our teacher prep faculty to help vet the high school curriculum and liaise with our ISD partners to make sure that the diploma that we're offering is appropriate and on par with what the ISTs are offering.
Well, it's great news for our community. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank everybody that worked on or is working on this. Any other comments?
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Section seven, Student Services, there is none. Section eight, Community Services, there is none. Would the board like to go into executive session?
Yes.
Item one point three, Executive in Closed Session. The Board of Trustees may conduct an executive or closed session pursuant to Chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code for one or more of the following reasons. One, consultation with its attorney to seek or receive legal advice or consultation regarding pending or contemplated litigation or for any purpose authorized by law. Two, discussion about the value or transfer of real property. Three, discussion about a prospective gift or donation. Four, consideration of specific personnel matters. Five, discussion about security, personnel, or devices. Or six, discussion of certain economic development matters. The Board may also announce that it will go into executive session on any item listed on this agenda if the subject matters permitted for a closed session by provisions of Chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code. Any vote regarding these items shall be taken in open session. Item one point three point one, Discussion with Legal Counsel Regarding Negotiation of Ground Lease Agreement for EPCC Northwest Campus with Cano Thio ISD pursuant to Section five-five-one point zero-seven-two of the Texas Government Code. Item one point three point two, Discussion with Legal Counsel Regarding Proposed Board Resolution for the Student Success Endowment Fund pursuant to Section five-five-one point zero-seven-three of the Texas Government Code. The time is now five thirty-five PM, and the Board is in executive session.
Okay, we are back from executive session, and it is six thirty-seven.
Item one point nine point two, Discussion and Action to Approve Revisions to Board Resolution for the Student Success Endowment Fund.
No action.
We have no action. Thank you.
I'd remind the board that Friday, May second, at six o'clock at the El Paso Country Club, we're having the Employee Recognition Dinner. This Friday, which is also, by the way, Judge Haggerty's birthday. Who is not here was unable to make it today. And Dr. Graham, our next board meeting is scheduled for May the twenty-eighth at four thirty here in the boardroom.
And with that, do we have any other business? No? Okay, that concludes our meeting for today. Thank you all for being in attendance.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Tortega.
Thank you.